Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 5th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Luisee.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. I have no appointments to make tonight, but we do have a very special presentation from our library. So, I'm gonna start with that tonight, and we'll ask Swadish if, our library director, if she'd tell us a little bit about her presentation.
We had a very busy summer at the library. We did lots of programs for children, adults, and teenagers. We had 129 children who just reported some of our new programs, and they left 1,492 books. And we have 85 adults who just reported the program and got 360 books. And these books were there in six weeks. And also, we had 10 teens who just reported the program, and they got 235 books. Then, we also submitted an annual report to Mayor of State where this year we had a focus declaration of 63,000 items. Libraries separated, and material we borrow from other libraries is 10,000 items.
And we loan material to other libraries, 13,000s. And total number of people who use internet computer was 12,800. We have total 3,150 cardholders at the library. And as you know, every month, we have all these different events, events at the library. We started a new program this month. It's called Creative Writing Program. People who are interested in writing novels or short stories, they can come on first and the last Monday of the month. And we started new Spanish Storytime, which is for children for birth to five years old. So, every Monday now, we have Italian Storytime or Spanish Storytime, and then we have Sing Along with Ms. Elaine. Also, we have, for the kids, the book club and the movies, and for Halloween, they are doing a special Monster Mash Kids Halloween Parties. And then also for Storytime, and we encourage children to come in costumes, and lot of fun things going on. And also, we all offer, we are offering free, like, computer classes, one-on-one. At the last meeting, I mentioned, we got the grant from the Community Fund of Bronx, Lees, Chester, and Tuckahoe. And we are offering classes, like, how to sign up for email, how to download free music, and how to download free eBooks through the library system. And this, all programs are sponsored by the Community Fund, and these classes are on Thursdays, October 1st, October 8th, and October 15th. In the 12 o'clock, we start, and every, we give one-on-one, so everybody gets half an hour time, and they can bring their questions. So, talking about the computer classes, I just want to let you know, there are a lot of databases are available through the Westchester Library System. The only thing you need, your library card. So, if you have your library card, there's one, IndieFlex, which is the free streaming of the unlimited access to award-winning short feature films and documentaries. And this is across, like, 50 countries documentaries you can watch free. And the Freegirl is the music which you can, every week, you can download five free songs, and you can keep it, and we will, Ivan will explain later how you can use it. We also have One Click Digital, which is you can listen to the books on, on your phone, on your iPad. And for the children, we have Tumble Books, where the children can, animated picture and storybooks, they can learn reading and then listen to the stories. And for teens, we have Comic Plus, like, as you know, the children's are now, teens are more interested into the graphic novels, so that's also available through Comic Plus. And there's a DrivingTest.org, if the teenager or anybody who wants to learn how to drive, so they can take free driving test, like, a test online or practice test. And there are Rocket Languages, if you are interested in learning any foreign language, you can practice through Rocket Languages also. And Learning Express is another database, if somebody's taking, like, a examination for, going to, for the police officer, or the fire, or real estate agent, there are tons of it, like a GRE, or, you name it, there are a lot of exams available. You can go online and you can practice, and you don't have to finish in one sitting, you can take as many question-answer you can do, and also, if you want, somebody wants to become a citizen, they can also take free tests online. And there are a lot of health databases, and then financial databases are available, and ancestry.com, if anybody wants to learn about their ancestor, you can use that database also. So, today, we are going to, Ivan is here, she's going to mention two databases. Lynda.com is the database, if you want to learn any program computer-related, like, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Photography, you can practice through Lynda.com, and it's free. The only thing, as I said, you need your library card. And if somebody's, like, unemployed or something, it gives you also the credit, like, you took that many hours of the classes. And the second database she's going to mention is Freegirl, which you can download free musics on your devices. So, Ivan will explain it.
Wonderful. Okay.
My name's Yuen, and I'm a part-time librarian at Tuckahoe Public Library. So, today, I'm going to show you two digital resources that can be accessed from Tuckahoe Public Library's website. One is Lynda.com, and another one is Freegirl Music. So, Lynda.com is an online learning company that can be, that provides all kinds of courses taught by their industry experts in their video library. And Freegirl, Freegirl provides free music services through the library. And, so, the library, with the library card, people can easily go to these two websites and access the resources from there. So, I'm going to show you these two, how you can find and use these two resources through Tuckahoe Public Library's website. So, first, we need to go to Tuckahoe Public Library's website, and then you can click on the digital collections on your left-hand side on the website, and you will see a list of digital resources there. At top, the first one we have is the Overdrive. So, this is the most popular, most often-used digital resource on the list, and you can use your device, like Nook or Kindle, to download your audio and eBooks there. And today, I'm going to show you the Lynda.com and the Freegirl. So, after you click on the link on the Tuckahoe Public Library's website, you will see this login page here. And you will need your library card number and password to log in, and if you are the first-time user, you will need to create a profile first. And then, after logging in, you can see this homepage of Lynda.com. If you have any course that you are interested in, you can just put the course name in the search box to search for the courses. And you can also click on Browse the Library there, to browse what kind of courses they have on their website. And at top of the page, it also provides a history of the courses that you have watched, so you can choose to continue watching there. And underneath that, it will be a list of related courses that this website recommended to you. So, on the homepage of this website, it also provides a list of hot and new courses, like, the PHP course and travel photography courses, and other courses like that. So, I want to show you how it looks like after you choose and click one specific video course. Like, if we click on the Excel 2013 Essential Training Class here, then the video course will start. And underneath the video, you will see a playlist on your left-hand side. And the playlist contains different sessions in this video. So, for example, the first session in this video is Introduction. So, you can see it contains two parts. The first part is Welcome, and the second part is Using the Exercise File. And this part contains, it's about 1 minute and 6 seconds. And on your right side, you can see the information about the course, and it also provide a transcript of the whole video, and you can see the FAQs there. You can also save your, write and save your notes there. So, the Lynda.com is a great website with tons of courses that can help people to learn the skills they need. So, it provides courses like Business, CAD, Education, Design Developer, and Marketing. And it also provides courses of popular software, like Excel, HTML, Illustrator, Photoshop, PowerPoint, and WordPress. So, this web, this website really provides great resources online, and, and can help patrons to learn the skills they need. And with the library card, so patrons can easily watch these courses online. Then, let's take a look at Freegirl. So, Freegirl is a website that provides free music services. So, its name Freegirl means free illegal music. So, it offers about 9 million songs and 15,000 music videos. It also contains a lot of international music, too. It uses the Sony Music Catalog there. After, it's the same as Lynda.com, after you click the link on Tuckahoe Public Library's website, you will see this login page here. You will need your library name or zip code first to find your library. And then, you will see this login page, you will need your library card number to log into this website. And then, you can see this homepage of Freegirl Music. At the top-left corner, there will be a streaming time, and underneath that is the limit of the downloads. So, the streaming time every week is three hours, and the limits of downloads is about five songs per week. And at the bottom of the page, you can see, this is where you can stream your music. So, this website also provides the list of U.S. Top 10 Albums, Songs, and Videos there. And I did a little search, I found the Pharrell Williams there, and I found Michael Bolton, I found Adele's albums there. So, if you click on the album's name, you will see a list of songs in this album. And if you want to listen to the music, just simply click on the song, and you, it can, you can stream the song without downloading any program onto your computer. And if you want to download this song onto your computer, you can simply click the plus sign besides each song. And after download the music onto your computer, the music will be yours, it's totally free, and the song will be yours. So, the only thing you need to pay attention to is the limits of streaming time and the limits of downloads. So, both Lynda.com and Freegirl Music are great websites with valuable resources. And our library also provide classes on how to use these two, use for website. And we really encourage people to use these two websites, to get benefits from them. And thank you very much for listening. Yeah, if you have any questions, just call the library and ask the librarians.
Thank you. That's, that's pretty unbelievable. I'd never realized that. So, from what I just, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if I wanted to download music now, I have a, I would go onto my iTunes account, and I would look up different music and say, I'm a Pink Floyd fan, so I'd say, okay, I want to download that new David Gilmour album that I just saw that was up there, and I'm gonna pay 10 bucks to download the whole album, or 99, or $1.29 per song. But I can go on this website and download that for free.
Yes.
That's pretty unbelievable. I don't, I'll bet none of our residents realize that. Well, I don't, I certainly didn't. I'm impressed. That was...
Every Monday, it allows you to download free five songs. You can pick, and then you can keep it.
Is it only on Monday you can do it?
No, like, every Monday, the new...
Oh, that starts the new week, okay. So, five songs a week, you can get.
So, if you download it, but you can listen to more, but download only five, so next, like, it will tell you, you, there's a five, and then you downloaded three, and now you have two more to go.
And it's all legal.
All legal. And also, you don't have to buy, like, people are buying eBooks, like, through Amazon, you can download free books, it's available, like, on your Nook, iPad, you can listen to the books. So, these are all available through the library.
That was pretty enlightening, I'll say. I, I, one thing you mentioned earlier, you said, you threw a number out there, 12,000-something people use the internet in the library. Is that just over the summer, or is that over the span of a year?
No, this, we do the annual report, which is required from New York State, we file every, you know, year, so this was last year, 2014, from January to December.
Okay.
Yeah, so, this doesn't include the, we have laptops also, with the children, the user, teenagers. This is only the public computer which we have through the library system.
I think everyone thinks, I shouldn't say everyone, but most people think that everybody has a cell smartphone, which is like a mini-computer, an iPad, a laptop, and most people do. But I'm still enlightened to hear how many people actually do go to the library to use it. There still are quite a few people, and I know there's a lot of students who don't have access, and they come to the library for that, and some of the seniors also.
Right, and also, recently, I know, it's like, every time if somebody lost their job and they're applying for unemployment benefit, and everybody tells, go online, and some people, they are not comfortable, so they ask us to help, and sometime, we have to walk through them, like, you know, and, you know, then they feel it like somebody helped them to get what they needed, or traveling, they needed, you know, even like, somebody was there a couple of days ago, and she was going to see the Broadway show, but, you know, there are no more tickets or anything, go online and print. So, people, they come, some people, they don't need, but some people need help.
So, as we've said over the last couple of years, a library isn't where you're going and taking out a book and paying a two-cent fine for being late on your, on your book. I know, two cents, you're laughing at me, because that was when I was in elementary school. But, I mean, the library is really, almost a technology center, really.
That's true.
Yeah.
There's a lot of new technologies available, but, you know, everything takes time, and some, you know, finance, you need money for teenagers. White Plains Library and some other libraries, they already have, like, 3D printing, so they have 3D printers where you can print anything, you know, you like, so, that's the new...
Well, I think with that presentation, your whole system's gonna crash on Monday, when everyone's logging in to, to download all that free music. I thought that was pretty interesting, so, I could tell you, my son will be doing it, so, that was very neat. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving on with our agenda, we have, well, we have no public hearings tonight, and we do have to approve our minutes of the last board meeting, so, the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 21, 2015. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
Abstain.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondence this month? Nobody's writing to us. That brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda, if anybody would like to speak on anything on our agenda. If not, we're gonna move on to resolutions, and resolution number one, be it resolved that according to Section 15-104, Subchapter 3A of the New York State Election Law, there shall be nominated two nominees for the office of trustee. Set office to be held for a term of two years, beginning April 1, 2016. And be it further resolved that elections for such office shall be held on the 15th day of March 2016, in the seven election districts, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 32, and 33rd District, within the village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the sale for a bid in the amount of $8,700 for a 2001 Dodge 1-ton dump truck, which was auctioned on eBay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the sale for a bid in the amount of $187.49 for a Rand Model UC200 air compressor auction on eBay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the sale for a bid in the amount of $100 for a Lear Truck Cap auction on eBay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is declaring a 2012 Dodge Charger with police package and blue Kestrel 200 SCI racing bicycle as surplus for sale on eBay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
Before I vote on this, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let everyone in the public know that these are items, you know, this one in particular is a police vehicle, and please get on eBay and get, get the bids going higher and higher and higher. They're actually great deals, they're great deals, but we'd like to see a little bit more if we can, so, in favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing the closure of Warren Avenue for a Halloween party and parade organized by the Westchester Park Civic Association on Saturday, October 31, 2015. The time will be determined later. The parade route will commence at Marbordale Road at Lincoln Avenue to Stewart Avenue, and then to Warren Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And finally, resolution number seven is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That will bring us to the discussion portion of our agenda, and we have on here a discussion to consider some proposed modifications to the village code regarding restaurants and fast-food establishments. We put this on here just to try and get as many residents as we can to either write in, or certainly weigh in on this issue. The issue came up quite a while ago, when the subway application was first proposed for moving in on Main Street here, and one of the things that it brought to light for us was that the definition of restaurants and eating establishments in the village code is severely antiquated. So, one of the items that we're gonna be doing is, we're going to actually clarify that language and have a true definition of different types of restaurants that are currently in the village of Tuckahoe. So, that's our first step. So, once we have a handle of the definition of the different types of eating establishments, then we can take another look and determine whether or not we want those particular types of eating establishments in the village. So, I don't know, did I cover that quite well? Okay, thank you. Anybody else that really isn't, anybody from the public want to talk about this, or issue?
Jerry Frashanti, 4 Constance Drive, Tuckahoe.
Thank you, Jerry.
I hope you consider this very, very carefully, as far as fast food goes, because if you establish one, you're gonna open up a can of worms. Main Street is gonna be like Central Avenue. You'll have a lot of fast food stores coming in, so, give it a great big thought. I know people have to make a living, but also, Tuckahoe has to make a good standings. I don't like to see Tuckahoe become another Central Avenue. That's my opinion, and I'm sure it's opinion of a lot, and I'm surprised that not many people are here tonight to voice their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the board want to chime in on this?
Just, Mr. Mayor, you know, we have received petition with numerous signatures, so that's something that has already, it's in the record, we're aware of that. I'm not so sure that a lot of folks knew about tonight, but I think we're gonna have continuing dialogue on this still, so...
It's just a talking point tonight, that's all.
Thank you.
But I understand a permit had already been given to Subway to put that subway store there.
Yeah, they...
They're working on it.
Yeah, that's...
Now, how can that be, when you haven't clarified whether or not you're gonna allow a fast food store to come in?
That particular business actually opened up under the current village ordinance, which does permit a business like that. They had to go through, they were initially at the zoning board, and then they satisfied our zoning code requirements, which was a parking issue. They came up with adequate parking to satisfy the square footage of that store, and then they had to go to the planning board. So, they've been through the two land use boards of the village, but a delicatessen, a subway store is an, what's called an "as-of-right" business in the village of Tuckahoe, under our current ordinance. It always has been, actually, they could have opened up five years ago.
Well, I hope you can change that ordinance.
That's why we're...
And another thing, where is the parking gonna be? You, you claim that they have parking facilities?
They satisfied the parking requirement at the zoning board by, I believe, Gary, you can correct this.
Correct. They needed four spaces, and I think they, I think they found a private lot, a couple buildings down, where they rented the four spaces. They provide us proof that they had those spaces, they filed it with the building department. So, that satisfied their requirement for the parking, so they didn't have to go before the zoning board for a variance for parking, so they met the requirement. And then they went to the planning board for the site plan approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's gonna bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and we are going to jump right to Mr. DeMarco tonight.
I'm glad that we're all acknowledging breast cancer awareness month today, how great we look in all these pink shirts, and Tuckahoe will be wearing them throughout the village for the month of October. DPW will be. About three years ago, one of my employees, Claudio Santana, came to me and said, you know, my mother had breast cancer, and had family member that had breast cancer, could we bring awareness to the community? I was like, yeah, come up with an idea. And he goes, how about pink shirts? So, here we are today, you know, bringing awareness to Breast Cancer Month. I can't, I ruined my glasses, excuse me. But, listen, we all have somebody in our lives that have been touched by breast cancer, so this is our moment to bring awareness to this month. This is also a month for women to be mindful, to get yourself checked, and when you see DPW worker wearing these shirts, just give them a thumbs up, because they're, they're really bringing awareness to Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this is, like I said, the third month.
Third year. Third year, third year.
Third year, I'm sorry, third year. Anybody got any questions?
No, I just, you know what, this year, it particularly hits home for me. My wife's mother is dealing with breast cancer right now, so she has, for a few months, she's been in treatment for, since late spring, and she's putting up a good fight, actually. I think she's gonna be fine, but...
But you know what? It touches everyone. It really does. So it touches the families, of course, it touches the individuals. So kudos to you and Claudio for having those burly guys out there walking around with a pink shirt on.
Thanks, man.
So, yep, definitely.
Thank you. I'm going to move on. Every year, I think this is my second year that I forecast our winter prediction, and I think I was zero and two for the past two years, but who am I? You know, I work for DPW. But I thought this year it would have some merit if I got Joe Rayo to give us his insight on our forecast. Obviously, everybody knows that Joe Rayo is from Channel Twelve News, and I find his predictions pretty much on spot every time I watch him.
All right, now I'm getting nervous now.
Don't be nervous yet. But you will be nervous as I'm reading this, but let me just continue. I mean, his forecast is based on the United States, and I'm going to work my way into the Northeast. But this is Joe Rayo's dissertation for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen winter forecast, and it's titled, "Some Thoughts on This Winter Impeding El Nino," by Joe Rayo. I felt it's only appropriate that I read his dissertation, because this is something he's worked on, and I wanted to read it just as he has it. It begins by saying, "This year scientists around the world are keeping a sharp eye on El Nino. They know that the greater the temperature rises in the Pacific water of the South America, the more powerful El Nino would get. And this year's Pacific waters have heated up usually fast. Climate change experts expect the impact to be substantial, perhaps shaping up to be a blockbuster, calling it the Godzilla of El Nino. If indeed this comes to pass, the hardest-hit parts of the country will likely be California, where torrential rains can send houses sliding down muddy slopes onto washed-out coastal highways. The nation's southern states, California going east all the way to Florida, should expect cooler and wetter temperatures than normal this winter into the spring, with extensive storms in some areas. The Pacific Northwest should be warmer and drier than normal. What about the Northeast, which is us here in New York? If we use the three most recent potent El Ninos on record, those of nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-three, nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-three, and nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-eight, as a baseline and check what kind of weather occurrences in the winter of those years at a representative location, I decided to check the records of Central Park in New York City. So far, as temperatures are concerned, the three El Nino years surveyed saw winter temperatures raising from one-point-two to four-point-one above normal. Keep in mind that last winter's temperatures averages out to be four-point-four degrees below normal. Even if we saw the most conservative winter values at thirty-eight-point-two degrees for the winter of nineteen seventy-two to seventy-three, that still would be five-point-six degrees higher than last year's winter average. A welcome change, to be sure. So in conclusion, if you take into account this very small sampling, much of the Northeast U.S. should experience a milder and wetter-than-normal winter, with odds of two out of three that snowfall will average below normal, although the possibilities of at least one major snowstorm capable of delivering a copious amount of snow cannot be entirely ruled out. Thank you."
That sounded pretty good to me.
It's something I wanted to hear.
We could definitely use the rain and a warmer winter, we all could use.
Yes.
That sounded good.
But thanks to Joe Rayo.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
I also want to move into some other things that's happening at DPW. Leaf season is upon us, and of course, I have to give everybody my spiel, but it is very important that everybody's mindful on where they set their leaves and be cautious about parking on these leaves. You know, if everybody could rake their leaves closer to the corner, and, you know, please don't hide the sidewalks, because children are walking to school. You know, we want, we don't want them running into the street and veering off. We want to keep the sidewalks clear. But I prefer leaves to be up against the curb. If neighbors could get together and designate an area where they could pile these leaves, it would be easier for everybody, especially that there really isn't that much parking here in Tuckahoe. But most importantly is that, you know, underneath all of our cars nowadays, there's what they call a catalytic converter. And that catalytic converter gets sometimes red-hot, and people don't realize. You know, as you're driving, you sometimes smell it burning. It's got that odd acidic smell to it. But that's your catalytic converter. And if that catalytic converter parks on a pile of leaves, there could be a potential fire that could be started. So we want to really eliminate any fatalities or fires or anything that might happen like And we'll be starting leaf season probably in another two weeks. There really hasn't been that many leaves falling right now, so probably in another two, three weeks, we'll be starting our pickup.
When can people put leaves out of the curb?
They could start putting it out now. I mean, realistically, we should be putting it out at the end of this week, next week. But if I start seeing piles out there, we'll start the crew out to, you know, collect them. There's no set schedule. I mean, we get people that call us every year and wanted to know if we're going to be here Tuesday, or we're going to be on a certain area on a Wednesday. There's no set schedule. Typically, there are two trucks that go out, but at the beginning of season, we'll have one leaf blower going out. So it just finds its way through. It's got a route that it follows, and when it gets to your home, it gets to your home. I mean, we don't make special pickups. And then we go back and we start all over again at the route that they've established.
And I guess when you start, it's going to depend, of course, when the leaves are really dropping.
Correct.
This year, since it was so dry, are you seeing leaves coming down a little bit earlier?
Not really yet, but I do plan another week or so, they should be falling. I also want to go into some of the things that DPW is looking to do. We're starting a Toys for Tod drive for the Christmas holidays. Again, my men are working with John Galuzzi in setting up the specifics. It will be on our local channel, it will also be in our website. And again, that'll be held at the community center. We are also working on a pasta night. So the details for that are not really forth yet, come forth yet, but we're looking to have that at the community center, and the dates are not really set in stone yet. But the DPW workers are volunteering their services to cook and feed everybody pasta. They're the servants for the evening.
That sounds good.
I will also be there, so I will give everybody the details on that. And again, check the community, I'm also, I'm sorry, check the local channel and our website. You know, we're also going to be closed on Columbus Day, which is next Monday, this Monday coming. So garbage pickup will be the Tuesday, and the Tuesday pickup will be the Thursday. And if anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to give me a call at DPW.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Camille, anything from the clerk's office?
I just wanted to let everyone know that I was at NICOM this past week, and it was a great learning experience. And I highlighted some of the items and sent them to our village administrators, so this way he can review them.
Wonderful. I know, I'm glad that you went up there, glad you made it. It's good training up there. Gary, anything from our legal department?
I'm ready to end tonight.
Okay. David, anything? All right. Screaming along, fine. Miscellaneous business, we have our next village board meeting is going to be on November ninth. We are going to have a residence meeting November eighteenth, which will be down at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And also want to remind our residents that the parking stickers expire on November thirtieth. New stickers will be available on November second. That is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees' member reports, and tonight, we're going to start with trustee Luisee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank everyone who participated in supporting the Tuckahoe Seniors Annual Bazaar at Father Fata Hall this past Saturday. It was an impressive turnout, considering the weather. When I was there with the mayor, it was a pretty good crowd, so thank you to everyone who participated in supporting the seniors. Their upcoming events on October sixth, and I really want to bring this to everyone's attention, Keller Williams Realty is hosting a Masquerade Ball fundraiser this Thursday at six P.M. to benefit the Tuckahoe Seniors. Last year, they made a very generous contribution to the senior center, which was very, very helpful in funding many of their trips outside of Tuckahoe. So if anyone is interested, it's twenty-five dollars at the door for this event. So I'd like to thank Keller Williams Realty for being such a generous supporter of the Tuckahoe Seniors. On October thirteenth, the seniors will celebrate Oktoberfest by traveling to the wonderful Catskill Mountains and spending the day at the Villa Roman Resort for lunch and a show. The seniors will have access to the resort's indoor pool and sauna. And lastly, the seniors will be celebrating Halloween on Thursday, October twenty-ninth, at twelve noon, with a pizza, pizza luncheon. See what happens when you go out of town for a couple of days. And the Tuckahoe History Committee will be holding their open house this Saturday, October tenth, here on the second floor of Village Hall, from ten A.M. to two P.M. Please stop by, free admission, you can visit the Mini Marble Museum and speak to many of the members of the Tuckahoe History Committee, who will be more than happy to share with you their information about the history of Tuckahoe. Lastly, on a personal note, I would just like to thank the mayor and the board and everyone here at Village Hall for illuminating the Village Hall in a gold light this past September in honor of Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. The Empire State Building, once again, in its infinite wisdom declined to do it even for one day. And as big a Yankee fan as I am, they did light up the Empire State Building when Yogi Berra passed. But to me, not to diminish the integrity and importance of Yogi Berra, but to me, pediatric cancer is just as important, if not more so. So I would just like to thank everyone for doing that in my absence here. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Glad to have you back. Trustee Alfasi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, and that was, I'd like to personally thank you, David Burke, Chief, Frank, we had Bill Williams, we had Mike, who else? Am I missing anyone? I don't believe so. We had a meeting on the first of October at the A.C. Jeffries VFW post. The constituents there came out and voiced their opinions and their concerns over some of the things that were happening with the project that's going in there, and also some non-related project concerns. And I wanted to thank everyone, certainly the citizens who came out and voiced their opinion. It was wonderful to see. I think everyone agrees it was a very positive meeting for everyone who was there. We got a couple of things ironed out, and I think the community is very appreciative. So thank you very much, everyone.
It was very productive, yes. Thank you for organizing that, appreciate it. Trustee Antonio Leo.
Swadeesh-
She covered it.
-made a wonderful presentation this evening. Again, I just want to emphasize that the library has not only those two programs that were presented this evening, but there are also quite a few online programs that are available for the entire community. So take advantage of those programs, they're wonderful, actually.
Thank you. I'm just going to talk about one thing tonight, and we've been kicking around for a while now about how we're going to handle banner placements. We have a lot of organizations who have been, for many, many years, taking banners and signs and putting them on our fences and our parks and in our, at our two train stations. So we've made a conscious effort to try to control this, and we're kind of, I think we're getting ready, we're narrowing down to what I think is going to actually be a, I don't know if this is going to show up, if, let's see. Yeah, looks good. I don't know if they're zeroing in on this. Well, anyway, what this is, for those who can see it, it's actually going to be, we're going to have this in two locations, and it's going to be sort of like when you see the "Welcome to Tuckahoe" sign. So it'll be two posts, and I will point it out, two posts here, here, and then a top banner, "Community Events." And there's going to be two spaces here, where, there we go. Okay, good. So there'll be two places for two different signs. And the plan is, is to go ahead and any organization who wants to go ahead and place a community event sign. Let's say, like, right now, we know that Growlers is having a chili cook-off. So what they would do next year is they would actually make an application to the Village Hall and say, look, we would like to place a sign on the community events bulletin board. We would give them the permission for that. They would have to do it in a certain timely fashion. We'll figure it out maybe thirty days in advance. Their sign would have to conform to the size that will fit here, which is going to be a stock size, four-by-four. They would then deliver that sign down to Department of Public Works. They would have to bring it down there, probably a week or maybe two weeks in advance of when the event is going to start. And then DPW is going to be the entity who's going to actually hang the sign and place it inside this, this community events panel here. It'll stay up for a week, maybe two weeks, leading up to when that event occurs. DPW will remove it within forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours after the event is finished. The sign will go back to DPW's yard, and the entity who actually brought the sign down there, they'll have thirty days to take the sign off of DPW's property. So, you know, it sounds like a rigid policy here, but we've really decided we need to take a little better control. We didn't want to just say, no, we don't want signs anywhere, but we wanted to create fairness for different entities who want to go ahead and use it, whether it's the schools. I know the school has used our fence, but we want to kind of clean it up a little bit. And we thought this is a beautiful application. Right now, we're looking at two locations. One is going to be by the Crestwood Train Station, the other's going to be by the Lake Avenue parking lot, which is where you see banners now. There's a couple of them hanging from that fence. So it's still a work in progress. Once we finally wrap this up, we'll actually memorialize it at one of our meetings, and then we're going to go ahead and send out a notice with an application form to anyone who's ever made a request to the village to put a sign up, and we'll take it from there. So it's something we'll probably have in place by next year. But like I said, it's still a work in progress. I just wanted the residents to know that we're still working on it. And with that, that's going to bring us to our second opportunity to address the board on anything at all.
At the Eastchester Center, they said, "Don't give me a mic." Well, at the last meeting, you stated that the Tuckahoe Village Structural Engineers and the Railroad Engineers found that bridge to be safe. Now, I think it's been closed for over five years. Why was it closed, if they claimed that it was safe?
It's safe, in other words, it's not safe for passage, but it's not in, it wasn't imminent danger of falling onto the tracks. I think, maybe I didn't clarify that. But it was determined by an engineer that the village hired that we should close their structure for pedestrian traffic, mostly because we don't have any control over how many pedestrians are going to be on that structure. And we certainly know when it was used mostly, or had the most capacity when we had our fireworks event, and we weren't going to take the chance of having, you know, two hundred people on that structure and have it collapse. We weren't going to take that chance at all.
Well, I think you should think about having it taken down, because-
We have every intention to.
As each year goes by, the expense gets even higher. I thought there was a grant somehow for that, the bridge to come down.
No, boy, I sure wish there was. We tried to get Metro North to pick up the cost, or at least share on the cost, and that didn't go anywhere. We do believe that when it finally comes down, that the value of the steel itself will offset some of the cost of the removal, but it's, we've actually bonded some money about, maybe a year or so ago, we put some money in a bond that we were bonding at that time to get us towards the actual removal of the bridge. It's, it'll be coming down, that's for sure. It's, I mean, you know, it's an eyesore, and it's something that has to come down.
Well, the last meeting you said was on radar. What did you mean by that?
It means that we will be taking that bridge down.
But not in the near future?
I can't define exactly what it's- I can't define exactly when it's coming down, but it will be coming down, yes. Thank you.
If money were not an issue, it'd come down. But money is an issue. But money is an issue.
I know money is.
So, as long as, as long as it's, at least, you know, as far as we understand from our engineers' report, that it's safe to be up currently, once we find the money, once we can get those monies together to get it down, it certainly will come down.
Yeah, but the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost.
I understand. That means we should buy everything today and nothing tomorrow.
I'm willing, even as a senior citizen and a retiree and a taxpayer, I'm willing to vote for a bond to have that bridge come down, believe it or not.
I understand.
And I understand this talk that we're getting a lot of revenue from all these new buildings going up, as far as, you know, taxes go. But I think taxes are going to go up, because with all these new buildings, once they're occupied, that means more policemen, more police cars, more firemen, more fire rangers, in fact, maybe a new firehouse. More DPW workers, and more workers in the Village Hall. So, that's what I feel. This money is going to go. I don't think taxes are going to go down. I hope not, but I don't see anything in the near future going down. All right. Now that I have my piece, I'll give you the good news, okay?
That's what we want to always hear, the good news.
Well, I happened to be tuned in at the planning board meeting the other night, and I want to recommend the chairperson of that meeting, because before her was, I think, the architect or the lawyer for the construction company wanting approval of the changes he had already made. Now, she told him, "The proper channel is to go before the building board, submit your changes and whatever you want, and then come to her, not to do it and then go ahead." I'm hoping that in the near future, somebody gets a CO, let's say, on a two-family house, and all of a sudden, it becomes a three-family house. Now, that's not really any good. But that's what I feel. And another thing is, I want to praise John Galuzzi at the Tuckahoe Community Center for putting up with us for all this while. It's been almost a year and a half. And I think it's going to be maybe to the end of the month where we'll be out of there. But he's going to be sorry that we're leaving, and I'm going to be very truthful, I'm going to be sorry that he's leaving, because he worked hand-in-hand with us and did everything he could to help us in any way he could to make us stay as comfortable as possible. And again, I want to thank East Chester and the Tuckahoe Village for doing what they could to make the seniors a place to live. We're looking forward to going back to Lake Isle, hopefully at the end of the month, I think, maybe sooner. So, it'll be our home away from home again. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Glad to accommodate, thank you. And if there's nobody, well, there's nobody else here tonight, so if there is no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I just want to mention that the East Chester's having the annual Columbus Day Carnival
Oh, thank you.
at the Lake Isle this weekend, starting Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and ending Monday. The East Chester seniors will have a booth for the 50/50 raffle, so support the seniors, because we sure do support you. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up, actually.
Yes, we almost forgot.
Yes. I was on the WVOX radio station this morning talking it up, so thank you, appreciate that. So, I'm going to now ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.